Okay, it's one o'clock, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Um, I don't think we've got any changes to the agenda. So unless anybody else has anything to, if not, I would take a motion to approve the agenda.
I move second.
All those in favor? We are six zero. Wayne, I think will be here. He, he texted me and said he was just gonna be late. He was still running a tractor. Um, okay, um, consent agenda, any questions? Comments, concerns? If not, we'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move second.
All those in favor, six zero. Um, I think we have anything for four or fives, any board member reports?
We're in negotiations, so.
All right, uh, we will move on to the, the discussion items then, and item A is the maintenance and transportation update.
Yeah, the board your guys, we, and I, I told them that you guys kind of wanted to talk to them anyway and just um, appreciate what they're doing, but they also had some things to talk to you guys about, so.
Sure, um, I don't know, uh, you heard that you guys like the reports that we're doing?
Very much so.
Continue with that. Um, last month, we both kind of got sick, so between now and then there wasn't as much on that list. We do have work that's getting started by some contractors for the one oh nine south high house, the Parsonage House, and then they are supposed to start this month on the high school as well. We've got a guy here today looking at the gutters.
Gutters, gutters aren't gonna start until next month after kids get out because there's a lot of, I don't know how much that span is, but he has to cut it off and we don't want to get copping on to anybody.
The supports are like under the coating of the roof, so you have to literally cut them to get the.
Gonna be processed, uh, and he can't get the material for the high school, so we're gonna look into like, uh, some sort of coating we put aside the gutters.
So the issue is, is that since the curve, they just basically segmented him to make a curve around with the gutters and it just leaks terribly and then it freezes and then we're fighting ice. So especially on. Cocked it, cocked it, I don't know how. We'd like to try to spray a coating unit, that might be the best option.
Some sort of like a Rhino London coating, some sort. We don't know, we haven't looked into it yet, we just got that news at twelve block today, so. Uh, wanna talk about busware stuff?
Oh, sure, so, uh, you know, we've, we've got the mud routes, um, it, basically, we kind of have a look for solutions, um, to help us manage the, our fleet essentially, so. Our buses are going all, all out everywhere, um, we get a call, it's hard for us to know where they're at, to find them on a map first. Um, we actually found a company that they do work for, the Air Force, the Pentagon, pretty secure company. Um, they basically have GPS that they put in the buses and then we can actually see how fast the buses are going, if they stopped at railroad crossings, how, how long they stopped at, you know, a parent's house, if a parent says, oh, they didn't wait, well, we would know exactly how long it'd be.
Sound like they're gonna do like the maintenance reports and stuff through there so they can log on to the thing, get it on their phone. You know, your data reports and whatnot.
And then it has like a, a corresponding app that your parents can get. So the parents actually have an ETA of when their kid's gonna get dropped off, if there's any changes, like snow days, mud routes, that sort of thing. They communicate directly with that route, so say Cherry's route is gonna have a different, you know, meeting place for a mud route. We could communicate directly with just the parents of those kids.
Parents.
And then Eric and Joe, et cetera.
So kind of alleviate the bus drivers, you know, super communicating with all the parents on their route. That we, we can do that, you know, alleviate that with them, which needs to happen because they shouldn't be.
That'll fix that Pomoso problem, huh?
Yeah, you have a couple of issues with two michelles and.
Yeah.
There's some stuff that we can look at, it, it looks like it's a okay deal, he has a little thing, if you wanna see some more on it, a little.
Um, we could actually, I mean, we don't really have to go all in right away, we can have them send like a trial where they basically just send us one. Um, I know.
Have you talked to any other like districts that are using this, or is it, do you know anybody else that's tried it?
Yeah, they gave us, uh, contact info for Merriam, uh, Kansas.
Good.
And I called the guy, called the guy, and I left a message again this morning, and he hasn't quite got back to me, but they are using, if it's a little bit bigger district than ours, you know, more population. Um, but they, they use it, I think, a lot more on the east coast, from my understanding. So, but that would be nice to get some, you know, more information from a school that's actively using it and see if they like it, if they have problems, that sort of thing.
And if you're in bus drivers, it'll show you a map, we can have something in their tablet, that'll show you, I need to do this route today. I can jump on, anybody in there basically, and they can just follow the.
Yeah.
You know, the GPS, I mean, it's.
If you have a problem with the bus, you can actually take the GPS out, put it in another bus.
Suburbans, yeah, these are all transferable too, and it's a little, you know, a little thoughts about yay by yay. And I don't know what the, what was the cost, any tell us about it?
It was around, um, five hundred and twenty a month for eight passengers or five.
Eight trackers.
Five. To chime. So.
The more you add, the more, the more the cost essentially.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
But if you wanted to release something, you know, that price would come back off, so.
And no, like they put these in, it's just, they bring you the little trackers and it's five hundred, so much per tracker per month.
Correct.
It's kind of like unlimited for the app as far as parents and that sort of thing, so. Um, I know, yeah, suggested that we, we may have some concern from parents, um, as far as tracking, I'm, the software has pretty good security, I think, it's secure socket layer, it's the same kind of thing that's on the internet now, I'm not saying it'll never get hacked, but we also could have somebody just sit up there and follow the bus, I mean, I, I just, I, we can actually set the app up so that the parent won't be able to see, you know, the ETA on their kid and not every stop, so if that makes people more comfortable, I don't know, that's a discussion again later on the road.
Kind of training, I mean, just for bus drivers, does it take? For them to use?
Oh, it's.
So they don't actually have to use it?
No, they don't have to use anything.
So that we can actually like have them have the app on their phone and that can give them the route and turn by turn directions, so they don't have to actually look at their phone, they can just set it and go. The company says they want to implement tablets at some point, they are at some school, but they're rolling them out slowly and testing it before they, you know, allow anyone to have them.
What the bus driver would have was their, your, your daily logs, your, your pre, post trip inspections, your, usually just your weekly stuff that they have to fill out and stuff, it'll tell. Janet likes to have people, when they start, stop, you know, timeline of all that, it will, it'll, it'll do all that.
And take away some paper they didn't have to do.
Paperwork way, so.
And it would, it would make the paperwork more accurate than it is right now.
Yeah, that's true, so.
It's easy to do a week at once and write times down.
Kind of smart in the way that, um, if a bus driver gets in a bus and starts driving the route, they will actually pick up that route and they'll say, oh, this is Cherry's route. And kind of continue to give the turn by turn directions for that route, yeah, this, it's pretty, I think it's pretty good, it would help us a lot, I think.
I, I asked them to, to talk to you guys about that, just to interview some of you guys, we're not asking to move forward the purchase to this point, we just kind of let you guys kind of run, and if, if some of you guys wanna explore further or not.
Sure.
Maybe you talked to a couple of bus drivers, are they interested in it?
We spoke to them a little bit there, uh, it's something new, you know, nobody likes anything new, but I think once I said, you know, you can do your maintenance reports and, you know, your three and post and, and they were like, that'd be nice, and your time sheets and everything else, you could do all that on there, and they were like, yeah, that's less paper for them, you know.
A little on the evidence the next week.
Oh, yeah.
Where's the easier, is that, you said there was gonna be something easier.
So you got, you got a couple of older ones excited about it then?
I think so, yeah.
I wouldn't say excited.
The one that picks up Justin's kid in particular. Oh, I know what he wants.
I think he knows damn it.
Okay, well.
Yeah.
Well, there's probably that kind of an initial fear of like, big brothers watching my, me drive everywhere and,
and then they speed land.
Are they, are they just trying to bust me, making a mistake, and that's obviously not what, not the intent, but.
It's, it's to protect them too.
Right.
You know, to ensure that, you know, that we know they're doing a job and doing a good job and that nobody can accuse them of not doing that, there's a protection for them.
Yeah. I mean, it'll, it'll track what, basically, anything you want it to track or anything you don't want it to track.
You can go back in time and look at their route and actually watch.
Watch them where they stopped to a, a railroad track and they sat there for however long, or at your house, or who, who's, who's in your house, they stopped out for two minutes, they didn't come out. Pretty slick.
The, the initial cost you mentioned sounds pretty reasonable really, but it's, is, are there different levels of service then that you step up and say, hey, we wanna add this package to this, and then the price goes up, or just, or is it just kind of?
I think it's.
Currently, no, they're, they're just working on extra bolt-on additions to the software and, and maybe down the road when they add maintenance, like for instance, a lot of school districts want all of the documentation for their maintenance for each bus on the software, because they're weird, you know, you could put mild gym, your, you know, uh, oil changes, all that sort of thing and have it all logged in one place, right now, we're kind of, we are trying to digitize it and put it on spreadsheets and break it down, um, but that would be one of those things in the future that if they roll it out, it'll probably increase the cost for the, for tracker, but.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's something to look forward, I mean, look, looked at anyway, but this is kind of how many dawns we have in our county, or where we go with everywhere. So it's, it's, it's a lot, I'm living parts every day, every, every, every weekend most of the time, there's somebody out and about, you can put it on Suburbans. You know? Anything's a possibility, I think, with it, so.
If there's an emergency, we know exactly where they are, there's no guessing, we could just, man.
Yeah, because we don't, we don't know where one sixty Q really is, or whatever, you know what I mean?
Is this satellite GPS?
Yes.
Yeah.
What's the name of that?
It's called Busware.
I know where you.
Yeah.
Sounds promising here.
I think, I think it's a.
Yeah, I think so.
Reliability, absolute maintenance and time factor.
I would, I would go ahead and pursue it, I think, and see, see what more you can learn, and if, you know.
We'll contact Jonathan and see if he'll send us out a tractor and give it a pleasure on, maybe propose it for you guys at the end.
Yeah.
See what we think about it in a month or two or whatever.
I'm, I'm curious, uh, this is pretty common in the insurance industry to do these Driveology systems, is that an option for our, if we show that? And the point of it is, you get insured to a certain level, but if you show that your braking capacity, speed, acceleration, all those things, or within certain parameters, you get discounts. Can we?
We can check into that.
I can check into that for. Um.
I might be honest.
An offset. Hang on, so.
Not to ask, okay, well, appreciate that, appreciate all, all the things that you guys have been doing, that's one, you know, one of the main things I've heard from the board here is I kind of wanted you guys to come in if, if for another, no other reason than for us to have a chance to just say thank you, we appreciate the things that you're doing, appreciate that you've kind of brought us into this decade at least with the technology and the, that, the, the board really likes that spreadsheet that you guys put together that shows all the projects you're working on and how far along you are with them and all, and, you know, that's, it's, that's really nice to have that kind of transparency and, and, you know, that kind of data, so. Um, and appreciate what you're, what you're doing with all the deferred maintenance that I'm sure you've run into with, with built, with, with buildings and vehicles, so. Anyway, it's, it's all trending in the right direction, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you.
I guess, I think that, I think that's it, but I guess what I would, the only final thing I would say is that if you ever have anything else that you wanna bring to us, please let, let me know, let Jeff know and we'll be glad to have you here, so.
Thank you guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You want the shot?
No.
Travis, don't forget you got mail.
All righty, item B, driver's ed, summer twenty twenty-four contract.
We got all the paperwork and money in, we have nineteen students, eighteen Rock Hill students and one non-Rock Hill student, so uh, Janet has put together the contract to reflect those numbers for classroom hours and driver's hours.
And it is in your drive, it was just put there, so, six, or, yeah, six B.
Change, we don't take late additions.
Chachi is, I mean, we paid like really quick, so I'm really hoping that if you get lost between now and then and now.
Any questions? Not, take a motion to approve that driver's ed contract.
I move to approve.
Okay.
All those in favor, six zero. Hey, uh, item C, Perkins changes.
Yeah, so I just, just to update you guys, we, Sam jumped on a couple too. There's been a lot of changes with Perkins altogether, um, right now, everybody is part of a consortium for the Perkins. No Perkins money now, if it's spent on any item or property, it's, needs to be available for everybody in the consortium. So.
Yeah.
Start.
But that's the change, or that's what?
That's part of it.
Okay. It's CTE money in the nutshell, right? That we can get grants to pay for equipment, but you're saying it relates to NC four, the only way we can use Perk, or?
Perkins itself, we, we're part of, we're part of Smoky Hills Perkins Consortium.
Oh, okay.
And so there's forty-six districts in Smoky Hills Consortium. Whatever is purchased with Perkins money has to be available in all forty-six districts.
If they want our three D printer, they call us, we need that.
So anything over, and we'll find out how this works, but anything over that we've spent over five thousand dollars on, if we do away with the Smoky Hill Consortium, we would have to give it its Smoky Hills property. Um, if you can start smaller consortiums, so like if we just use the NC KC four, the four of us get more than fifteen thousand dollars combined, so we could essentially become our own consortium, which should be a little bit easier. But then you also need to have somebody that has the time to do all the paperwork.
You're gonna have to employ somebody just to do all the.
Um, and Jeff, if we have to give stuff back to them, they're not going to pay us for what we paid, correct? Like that printer?
We're, we're still sure, unsure on that, now, Pam Kraus, who's been absolutely fantastic with, with Perkins, with Smoky Hills retiring. So I don't know who they're gonna have replace that, I, in our, um, Lloyd, our co-op spend meeting afterwards, I talked with Jesse Jansen and, and Jeff Travis about it, about, do we wanna explore just the four of us being a consortium, because at least then we can share stuff between the four of us. Like, i- in the past, we each had twenty-five hundred dollars that we put, and so each of us got a three D printer, or two of us got a three D printer, one of us got this, what, that can't happen anymore, it's whatever you have has to be available for all districts. So they're hoping that, and, and this is for next school year, so we're hoping that within the next twelve months, they make changes to that.
But that doesn't even make any sense, the logistics of that make, so all these schools are gonna have to transport all this equipment back and forth to the school, I mean, that does, that's silly.
So what, what every, every service center is currently doing for next year is planning, the only thing that Perkins money is gonna be used for is professional development conferences, things like that, because there's no other way, so.
Well, a lot of times we use their money and add it to ours to purchase something like that printer back there, that's going, gonna make it that we can't purchase any big things.
Wanted to update you guys that Perkins is kind of a mess right now.
So what do they do, they eat half of it? I mean.
Cut it in half, exactly. Yeah, so I, I don't know, I don't know about the stuff that we've already purchased, there's still some, some gray area on that, and, and that would only be if technically, we decided to create our own consortium and not stay with Smoky Hill, because that was perfect, purchased with Smoky Hill Consortium funds. If we were to break off and just do the NC KC four, then that would have to go to Smoky Hill.
Imagine the nightmare if somebody wanted to use that and we had to let them come pick it up and take it to their school and use it for a while. That's what I'm getting at.
This is a federal change?
This is, yes.
Through the Department of Education, Perkins.
Across, so every consortium, because I even looked at, you know, with us, with us, really putting a lot of our focus to Green Bush, you know, what, it's the same thing there, and they've got, what, ninety, ninety-six, ninety-two?
What's the advantage of being a consortium, just the management of the grant itself?
Yes, but you can't be singular, and you have to bring in over fifty thousand in Perkins grant money in order to be a consortium, so we can't be on our own, we have to be part of a consortium, because ours is, oh, is it thirty-five hundred, something like that?
So.
Um, but, yeah, this is, every, everybody across the state's like, what's the, it's almost to be like, what's the point of the Perkins if we're limited and only can, but.
So Jeff, that was a, that was a separate grant, that wasn't part of our regular, uh, fifteen thousand that we get for NC KC four, that was a separate grant, we had two, Sam, two additional grants, and one was a ten thousand dollar grant, and I think that's where that printer was paid for out of, with that special ten thousand dollar grant, how are they gonna handle those? Because we also got another six thousand dollar grant.
We remain in Smoky Hill, nobody's gonna say anything, because everybody's already done their thing, but if we were to go off into our smaller NC KC four in Green Bush, then that stuff would have to go back to Smoky. So, we're hoping that things are changed in the next twelve months where we don't have to go through this, but everybody's freaking out about it, so.
Okay, so I know we've heard, we like the Green Bush because of what it has given us right now for our.
Instructional side.
Instructional side. Are we paying anything to be in Smoky Hill?
Mm-hmm.
How much?
Pretty good check of money.
I'd have to go look, I don't have, I'll tell my head, it's about fifty.
Little over five thousand a year.
Five for something, but then there's, there's some other costs too.
I like where your head is at here, because if, if the only reason we're staying with Smoky Hills for thirty-five hundred dollars of Perkins money, we're paying five thousand dollars a year to get thirty-five hundred dollars, that doesn't make any.
But it also will keep us all the stuff equipped, but we have the shop has a lot of equipment.
Which makes me, next question, what will we have through Perkins?
Well, there are other things Smoky Hill does.
We get erased that.
I understand that, but if we go through Green Bush, we can get most of those things, probably.
Yeah.
And so.
Which we're already going through both of them right now.
Yes, but, and then that was well, I wanna wait and see, everybody's saying, just wait and see if Perkins changes moving forward, um, but if not, I've been looking at how can we just move everything towards the Green Bush direction, especially with Pam gone, I don't know what the Perkins is gonna look like, because Pam is fantastic. If, if she's the one that, hey, we need to turn in this application, there's extra money, and she'll help, we'll walk it through it, I'll send it to her, she's like, well, you need to get this, I mean, she's been fantastic, but with her going away.
Yeah, she's been really good to us, and the other thing is, is, um, um, they also, Spooky Hill also takes a percentage of everything we get for Perkins, so if we get twenty-five hundred, we spend it, they're gonna take a percentage of that back, we have to pay them. So they're kind of making a little extra money on the side too with Perkins.
The only, the only equipment we would need to return or reimburse is equipment over five thousand dollars, and she said she has a list of every district and what items they have that are over five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
The best of our knowledge, it was just this.
Was there something Kevin?
And there were some that Kevin said.
I thought Kevin had something that.
But I thought you said that that was not, it was that big planer.
Oh.
Can't get that, but he, that thing's awesome, but he, he said, you told me that came through that capital.
Okay, well, but then, but I need to maybe look and make sure we didn't get reimbursed, because sometimes we take those large things, that, a capital outlay, because initially, so, and then we just reimburse capital outlay.
The, the only thing that Spooky Hill provides right now is the Perkins and.
Typically, we take that. Yeah, well, I'm gonna set up a Perkins fund.
They offer some professional development services to our staff and that's through us.
Yes, but, sorry, is it okay? Um, they, what happens is that they plan all this stuff, our, our staff signs up for it, and then the numbers don't make and then they cancel.
Right.
I just, I, I, I mean, I think us exploring all our service centers options are great, I also know I, I don't, and I don't know if we fully grasp everything that Smoky Hill's offering us before we just cut that tie to make sure A, are we utilizing it somewhere else, I hate to just say, hey, we're not doing Smokey anymore, and then all of a sudden we find out there's some staff members or somebody's using pieces of it that is valuable to them, and I just don't know.
They don't have any, like, they don't have the online aspect of things that, that no much.
I, and, and I.
That's fair, I just, that's my, that's my concern, is there something we're not seeing?
Yeah, and I don't think we're ready to just completely cut ties yet, because we gotta figure out this Perkins stuff, but I, I spoke with Jeff Travis at length about that, and um, Roger Stumpit, uh, Southeast of Celine, they're closer there, that have had a long relationship with Chris Monomog, the, the director there, and they both voiced their concerns too, and they're trying to see why, like, the Green Bush stuff that we talked about, open enrollment or any, they're working together with Orion and as that, all the other service centers are all kind of working together to help out, and, yeah, you don't ever hear that for a while, so. Anyway, I just, the Perkins is gonna be a mess next year, we, we just across the state, and so we won't be able to use Perkins funds to purchase any items, it will be used for CTE conference and some of those kind of things, but that's how it's being utilized across the state for next year, hopefully there's some changes.
Makes no sense.
Uh-huh.
How about you figure out what the depreciated value of all this equipment is, and then we just write them a check and?
That's where I'm.
Take it, say it's ours.
I'm hoping that it's just kind of becomes too for, forgotten and Pam leaves and then.
That's why we did the request, what our list of five thousand dollar items were, because then if we leave and they're like, okay, see you, and they never ask.
Say, is, is somebody really gonna show up to your doorstep and load this stuff up and take it somewhere else, I?
I just.
That seems ridiculous.
It just kind of defeats the purpose of the whole Perkins.
Yeah.
Money, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, well.
Hopefully they have a big warehouse to put all their treasures in, that nobody's ever gonna use, that nobody's ever, they're gonna, he's gonna drive to borrow a printer, you know? Nothing that big.
Bought a lot of really good equipment in our shops, and kept recurring ticket, playing, moving, and pressure development for our staff, Perkins has done a lot for our district, and I just hope it continues to be there, like, that's a.
Well, I.
And, and, and like, when you say they're going to just professional development, I can't think of a time we more need them to do capital outlay investments into, you know, equipment, and that, we're gonna push it off, which I think, of course, it's great, but we need all of it. And that's, that's why, that's what concerns me is.
Well, then it'll be professional, or we wouldn't normally do.
They're encouraging us only to use a professional development, not for equipment at all in future.
For this year, every, but every consortium is doing the same because of the new regulations, but they're hoping that they're changing.
For sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I know that, that well, that, as the holders, there's so many places we got all our Perkins money, Perkins.
Okay.
So the update?
Yep.
Right, at this particular moment, I don't have a lot other than, put it in my Friday notes, but Mark and I met with Clark Weedle, uh, who was the, I guess, business growth, I don't know what, what to call his title exactly, but he was a superintendent at Haven. He's working for them, and he reached out to us, and, um, he came up and met with us, and, um, the owner Sid is gonna come up this Thursday about one o'clock to kind of see, um, and bring up their whole crew and kind of see our facilities and kind of get a bigger grasp of what our ideas are. Um, this, this kind of just, for lack of a better word, just kind of fell into my lap of Clark had emailed me and said, yeah, I heard that you guys might be exploring some things, like, what's the top, Mark knew Clark from his time in administration too, and they don't even bid projects that are bigger than three A districts, the owner, Clark was telling us that, um, he's from Halsted, and they had, and Halsted's a bigger three A, they had a bond project, he said, hey, let's go, two of the board members are classmates of mine, I think we can get this job, and, and he said, the owner said, no, we, we stick with our one, two, and small three A districts, that's our niche, so, we'll see what they have, they, like I put in my Friday notes too, they rough, I mean, I'm gonna hold you to it, but he thought three eighty a square foot for finished buildings where every other number we've been getting is four twenty-five before seventy-five a square foot, so, he'll be here Thursday, one to, one to three, one to four-ish to, to go through things, and so, I just wanna let you guys know exactly why we got somebody else coming up, I, I think at some point, we need to be sure and then move on, and then I'll get the specifics about what we're gonna have to pay with Count Gordon, I I'm fairly certain that we'll up to, we'll, we'll pay it up for HDK, the fifty percent drawing. There's, and Mark and I both read through the, the contract, there's gonna be some fees, depending on what that is, well, but not for sure. There's gonna be some fees, depending on what that is, well, by now for sure with the count Gordon, but they have provided some services that they're gonna have to charge us.
What's their, as you meet with them, uh, the questions I would be curious knows, what's their? What do, what do they do that they feel like they're best suited for smaller schools to bring in levels of efficiency cost? That's the question I'd ask, I mean.
He, he kind of talked a little bit about that or meaning that, that they pride themselves on knowing that they try to make the dollar go as far as they can. They want to take care of the customer and provide durable, long-lasting buildings, but. I know that's a sales pitch, I get it.
Yeah, I just, what are they doing to do that?
Um, what was it, look, is it lacrosse, is that right? I think they're, they're doing current projects in lacrosse right now, so.
Yeah, I mean, I just say that.
Oh, a hundred percent, I know, we're gonna, we're always gonna get a sales pitch, I might get that, but.
Yeah, references are great though. I think that's, says a lot.
So, I'll have more in our, my Friday notes after this, we'll see what they have to say, but the other thing that. So I sent that to him, and then Sid, the owner called me. If you think back to our, our, our drawing of the fights, five separate buildings, the junior high, the admin, the high school, the C T E, and then the all-in-one. I, I said, we're open to, you know, suggestions from the, from the construction side of it, what's gonna be best. What we don't want is you to tell us that we need all these different rooms and this and that, but if we're missing stuff, and, and he said that. It may be best to look at more of a one building versus five, which is a little bit off of that. Uh, concept of the, the campus, but even if it's the U shape, and then you still have that outdoor area. Try to get all them together, I don't know, but we'll see what he says when they come up.
So I think the key to all that, though, is from my understanding, is, is, is working within a pre-engineered system versus a custom made. I mean, I think that's, that's the key to anything we've been looking at is to lessen our cost. Right, I mean, that's what I gathered, that's the real opportunity for cost savings to be able to build, and get the most square footage. Per dollar is a pre-engineered system, yeah, so as you ask those questions. What they're suggesting fit in that scope.
Okay, I'll let you know after the meeting, he comes up, like I said, Friday at one, or Thursday at one. We'll go from there.
Um, Kisa.
Well, I'm sure with what we got for that, when we had our, our meeting here on the twentieth, um. I thought it went really well, it was, it was really nice to have a state representative that has sat in all of our chairs. She was a kindergarten teacher, and a lot of what she spoke to the, the D L T about was instructional stuff, was a kindergarten teacher, she was an admin, a principal. She was a superintendent for a long time, so she really understood what school approval was about. Went really well, kind of talked about what we have for vision with our professional development as far as our high-impact construction. P D and then redoing our curriculum maps and all that, and she was pretty impressed, and, and Sam asked. Question I hadn't even thought about was really good, he said, so you. Well, I mean, a lot of schools already have this regional visit, and he said, well, where do we kind of compare to the other districts you've been at as far as this ready for two point O? And she said, she wanted to preface it first, she said, usually with what's expected with the four. The four focuses, the four fundamentals, that the bigger four A, five A, six A have. The staff to address all of those, and it's a little harder for the smaller ones, but, but she said that we're probably the best for most. Prepared moving forward of any district she's seen yet, so maybe quite pretty good about just the direction that we were going, so. You guys have anything to add on that, Sam or Cassie?
We got a good direction, we got good plans, it's solid plans in place.
So, yeah, that made, made me feel good about the direction we're going, for sure.
Well, I'll tell you, we need to find a way to share that with our community, of, of, you know, we've invested a lot to do that, I don't know what that looks like. I think, I mean.
Pat ourselves on the back.
I agree, but we have. And I'm not, I'm not saying pat ourselves, I'm saying our community needs to know the value of what we are offering our educational system to our community. The preparation investment we've made, I'm not sure how to message that. We, we're doing a great way of messaging lots of other things, but that message needs to be heard. I'm not, not saying you can answer that question now, but I do think it needs to be on our radar, especially as we continue down these discussions. All the other things, we're gonna need more community. Because that, that process did not come without pain and cost and investment.
Yeah, well, she had a, a report, I mean, it's, the Kisa report this year compared to every other year is.
Is there anything in there we can use to promote this?
I'll, I'll email it to you guys, I mean, it's basically, it was just checkboxes, yes or no, or. And then that little snippet that I shared in my Friday.
Do you understand what I'm saying, like?
Oh, yeah.
Something that, hey, we have a, your district has a glowing report prepared for that twenty second, all that twenty percent.
I, I wouldn't even find that question.
From the state, you know.
And then. Will she quote that, we can put her picture in a quote? As a Facebook thing.
Quote her on what she said, impromptu meeting.
Yeah, but she did, right, she did. I mean, she did put a little bit of that in her report, which I thought was good, it was. Yeah, I mean, it's exactly what I put in my Friday notes, but. And, and, and this is one thing I've talked with, with Sam and Cassie about too, is hardest part for us is knowing that this is the direction we wanna go, and it's. She put it as her last statement, is we under, they understand that there needs to be slow and steady, up for this continuous improvement, not trying to move too fast. Especially to make sure that everybody's on board with it, from the staff side of things, but. But yeah, I mean, that, that's from our reports, I don't know why we couldn't, I just, I don't know, how, how powerful the message is when it's coming from us, you know what I mean?
But if we don't, if we don't pat ourselves on the back.
I know, and I agree, that, that's just it, you gotta make it look like it's not us patting ourselves on the back. Oh, yeah.
We've got to start.
We need a roar.
Some of that, if you, if you've been in education very long, you know, I mean, there's. There's an awful lot of kind of jargon and inside, I mean, if you were to go out in our community and ask the average person on the street. What, if they even know what Kisa is, how, what percentage of people in our, do you think, I would guess almost none of them, I mean, that, you know, that's. Before you go patting ourselves on the back about how great our Kisa report is. You're gonna have to go educate people on what the process even is that, that our district is going through, and so, you know, some of these kind of things, it's. There's gonna have to be some education involved before you can even. Well, we started that discussion several, you know, a year or two ago, and it, it was about how do we communicate all the successes of our district? I mean, we recognize when you do get to paper and that number shrinking is the number of people receiving that, unfortunately. That's, you know, if you're not on Facebook and you're a patron in this community. Where, what is our system of getting out our successes and.
We made jokes about trash can in the middle of the road.
Yeah.
And I've got some ideas that, that we'll talk about more next month about a way to kind of do a community vet to start the school year. And I think that's a good time to talk through, what is Kisa, it's a school recruitment and all that.
Get away in the weeds, but just make people aware that, you know. There is an ongoing process that all districts are going through to improve their instruction and everything else, and, and what that looks like and what our staff has done to. Complete all that work, and I mean, it's, it's a fairly big deal that most average parents and community members probably aren't even aware of, so. That's all, that's.
Yeah, well, that, that letters training stuff that all the elementary teachers are almost all done with, it's huge too, and, and. Talked about it ministerially, but I sat in on a Zoom. Because they're talking about making that as requirement for elementary teachers to re, re-license, is that science of reading training. And there's a lot of bigger districts that haven't even started that with their elementary teachers, and they're really freaking out, I mean, rightfully so, and, and they're setting a good shape, so, yeah. But I, I'll, I'll talk more about what I'm thinking about for, in August, um, come back, and we can definitely. Explain what that process is all about, so that there's a. Some background knowledge of it before you tooth the horn.
Okay, um, item F, the Garrity State Bank C D renewal. Looking through the financial components, uh, I, I, well, we, we're, we're currently have two five hundred thousand dollar CDs.
Correct, one of the three month, and one's a six month, the three month is what's up right now.
And I think we, I think we should consider today adopting, adding an additional five hundred thousand to that three-month C D, additional three hundred thousand.
And that would change the rate. Change the rate from five percent for the five hundred thousand to five point one five percent for the, if we put a million in that one. If we add.
It's an, otherwise in the now, what's it drawing?
I'm not sure what the rate is right now, I could, I could have to pull a statement.
It's not.
It's not drawing that.
Best case scenario, and this is not a guarantee, I was assuming it's in somewhere.
No, it's a guarantee.
The now account?
Oh, no, no, our now accounts here at State Exchange.
I'm just guessing, but best case scenario, that there's an interest rate environment, it's, it's three or less, but I, I, I don't want to quote me on that.
And I could, yeah, we done break, I can go look, but.
Three gets us to July first, right?
This is gonna be April, May, June, July, yeah, so July, and then both will come, both CDs will come due then. I wouldn't wanna make it any longer.
So, so that's either at least ten grand.
Do we at least have enough? We're hitting the storm season, and do we have enough with the insurance that we have? It to be, to put another five hundred thousand into. Three months of.
Well, we. I'll put my banker's hat on, always caution, like, you're only losing a portion of the interest.
Correct, correct, if you have to cut it, if you have to.
Your money back, you're just gonna give up some of the interest.
If we bought our deductibles down to fifty, what, fifty thousand? So, so, I mean, I would think unless we had a catastrophic storm, we should probably be okay, and if we did have to. Pull one out early, we're not, we're not gonna lose any principal, we might lose a little bit of interest.
She knows what she lives, right?
Speaking of that.
Well, uh, the, the, in, I'm asking clerk and superintendent, any reservation about being able to pay our bills if we were to do this?
Not five hundred, no. And probably, probably not the other, but I, I wouldn't answer that without.
So, on the, on the agenda is, we have one renewal, we'd, we'd have another new, is, is, is there another six month?
Um, I think we'd probably add to this one, or would they do a separate one?
They do, they do either, I'm assuming.
Yeah, it depends, however she wants to do it, to give us that little bit of extras, so.
Should add an additional five hundred thousand to that annuity, and renew it, and. From five hundred thousand to one million dollars in that C D renewal.
For three months.
For three months.
I'll second that.
Any other concerns? All those in favor? We are seven zero.
Okay, Danny, I don't understand, I don't understand now, how much, how much interest is that on three months for money, I'm just curious.
Twenty-five thousand a year, so.
So twelve fifty, six, yeah, a little under.
Oh, okay, I, I'm just curious.
The interest checks have been really nice.
My ten dollars on that five percent, that's eternal.
And the interest checks have been pretty nice, and last month, just on our general fund at, at State Exchange, it was a little over ten grand for interest for the month. So interest has been a lot nicer than it.
Yeah, I say, if you got a lot of money in the bank, it's a great time to have high interest rates. Yeah, anyway, okay.
Point seven five interest on all money in this, this, this. I'm fine getting some.
Uh, item G, needs assessment.
Yeah, I just shared this with you guys, we add, uh, the buildings go through and fill out their sections of that, and then I added to it and kind of put. Uh, from a district level, if you guys, the, the first part of that is. For the district, so if there's things in there that you don't agree with, please let me know. And then other than that, this was just kind of a first read, because we'll use this needs assessment as we start building the budget, um, and. This is the correct time that it should be presented to you guys, not in July.
Because that will be part of the motion that you saw this in August.
So I just went through there, kind of felt what I, or, or put some stuff down, I felt. I'm fit in there, but if you guys disagree with some of that, please let me know, I can take it out and redo the district side of it, so.
What I struggle with is, and, and this is great from your perspective, and I read the K P I stuff all the time, trying to figure out, this is their push. I, but I don't, what I struggle is how, how, I mean, your recommendations are spot on. But how do we translate this into our budget, because that's the intent of this? It is in there, but that's, that's the intent of a needs assessment, is take what we need in our district, and how do we implement it into our budget.
I would say that, from the people that think that there's too much money in education and its frivolously spent. This, I mean, we're putting our money where we can to best meet these needs, and we're just living on the funds we had, so. But I think that's what some of that push is, is they, that some of those groups feel as though that money is not properly spent in school districts. Being taxpayer dollars, I would argue that it is, and this is showing us how we want to continue to spend it. To reach those needs that we have.
I'm just looking at how to, I mean, I, I don't see anything that would shock anybody. But how do we use it to do something with it, that's what I, and I don't know the answer to that.
I just think it's, you, as a board, when we approve the budget, we need to make sure that there's. Decisions made in adopting that budget that are. Attacking these or addressing these needs the best we can, are they gonna go away, probably not, are the needs for the most part gonna remain the same? Year in, year out, yeah, most likely. But when you're, when you're limited in the fund you have, it's, and, and human breathable bodies to, to fill some of those spots.
I mean, some of this is good areas that have put some goals and action items into, you know, um. Again, what do we do with this now, other than, we approve it, or at least look at it, and we go approve it in July, how do we make it actionable and put it in place?
Well, we just need to make sure, and, and a lot of the stuff is kind of addressed with our strategic plan too, that, that just need, we need to make sure that we keep these. Is the focus of a lot of our decisions. And as what statute would say is make sure that your financial decisions are focused on this as well.
I take like the lack of access to community health services and mental health services. Okay, we've identified it, we see it as, you know, a barrier to. Our students. What's, what do we act on there, what's our, what's our, now, again, I might have to do that today, but at some point, that has, this. Has to serve a purpose where we're gonna identify and try.
Right, a, a lot of districts that have a lot more resources available to them, more than metro, they do a lot of their. Services they provide to students during the school day in a school building, so that you're not missing out on those hour and a half, two hour drive time, things like that. Are ways that, but here, we don't have a lot of those resources available. I mean, we do, but they're limited compared to. But anyway, you guys can look at that, enjoy that, um, lose your time. It'll, we'll continue to come back to that before we finalize the budget too.
Sped cooperative agreement.
Every five years, we have to, the, the, the co-op has our agreement, uh, we, so. Christie, Veris, the new director was going through this and realized that it hadn't been updated in quite some time.
See, there's a lot of.
Um, and so, we've been in our meetings, trying to go through this as much as we can, we're sending it off to a lawyer to look at. We, we wanted to provide you guys with all of the strike throughs, all the additions, so you can see everything on there. Um, kind of as a first read, and then we'll bring it back next month for approval, uh, on this cooperative agreement. Christie's doing everything she can, we, we talked about some of the budgetary things from the cooperative too, and, and looking at that, she's trying to cut costs every which way possible. While still needing maintenance of effort, uh, because you have to make sure you're spending as much, if not more than the previous year on special services. But trying to get the parapay up the best you can to hopefully be able to recruit a few more in that. I mean, obviously it's not in here, but she's hoping to get that parapay up to. At, of a dollar from where it is now, so.
Are they at ten, ten and a half?
I don't know exactly, I might have to go back and look.
I think that's what it is.
But again, it's for, um, first read. I mean, there's some stuff on there, I mean, Solomon and Lucas were separate.
There's still a signature one for Jewel.
There's still a jewel in it, in the.
There's still a jewel in it, in the agreement.
Scott, Scott Gordon is the, the word that's been looking through this and sending suggestions back to them, so.
I'm curious, is, are we, is, when we set, they set that rate of what we reimburse them, correct? Like, there's no negotiation on the rate we reimburse for this agreement.
It's based on number of kids that are serviced essentially. And the services provided.
So is that calculated on a per student basis, or do they make that estimate? Based on, how, how do they come to that number? It's kind of rough.
Short answer is it's based on a number of students that, and the, and the needs of those students. So every district has a different fee.
Yeah, and it's based on the stu- students' needs that they have within it, but that's.
You want a baseline.
Well, I was just asking, is that predetermined? When we, I'm just, in the change in the, I don't know that, I don't know how big a deal this is, but I, and I don't know how big it is currently, but the change in transportation oversight for us in the past has been a pretty costly one. And so when you, when I see that, that we're pulling out specific requirements within an IMP, are we be, still being reimbursed for those? Or are we being billed for, are, is they being reimbursed, but now we have to fill that gap of difference?
So the transportation taken out of that is when there was the, the what was it called? The TLC of Lloyd. We were transporting kids down there that we would get reimbursed for that special ed trip. That's no longer there, so we're transporting kids who are in district, there's no special ed transportation.
We don't transport any kids anywhere for IMPs, these are just Alina, we don't do any of that.
Nope, nope.
Well, okay, we don't do it currently. Does that, could that still exist?
Yes, could they still have the autism unit down there? And we did have one student go in there and put in a move.
But that, that was prior to this year, correct?
Yeah.
I said, we haven't transported any this year. Our three oh eight's gonna be really empty.
But am I, am I wrong that if we were to have somebody to go to that school, we would be required, they would pay for the transportation, but then the way this agreement says we'd be required to, if they did supervision, we'd have to provide our staff to supervise it. And I'm not saying this specifically, but that's what this is saying, right? I'm not aware.
It shouldn't, it, it shouldn't be, uh, it shouldn't be our employee, it just has to be. Although that was what it was when that happened, it was our employee.
Mm-hmm, yeah, Eric. Road.
Was he the driver or was it?
He was the writer.
He was the writer.
The writer. I don't know.
I'm asking this because are we being, if we are required to provide supervision to a student that's driving, or are we being driven down there, and we're covering that cost, are we being reimbursed through the special ed dollars we're getting, or is all that, is the, is the co-op getting all those dollars as well?
So, on our three oh eight, we can report some of those wages, we get a percentage. We don't get all of it.
And I, I'm using this as an example, I don't, I haven't read this whole thing to know where those gaps would be, but are there things that are getting reimbursed for special ed that being paid for to the co-op? But yet, because we are giving those dollars to the co-op, we are now responsible those of not being reimbursed for.
Transportation's in addition to what we pay them, so we have to cover the cost of all transportation and the aid that goes along if that's necessary. And then we can get a little bit of reimbursement. When the final reimbursement comes in at the end of the school year in June, a portion of that is ours based on the three oh eight that we uh, send in, which tells all of our transportation costs, our fuel costs, you know, insurance for any employees. We can take a portion of their insurance and whatever, so, that's, you know, uh, comparable to whatever their salary is, and then we get reimbursed for a portion of that. We don't.
That's not, that through, it's not a part of their IEP reimbursement.
No, we don't get any IEP reimbursement unless that's where it comes down.
As, as we report, or as we review it, uh, are we being, is anything we're not being reimbursed for coming out of our general fund for special education that the cooperative is?
Nothing to worry about.
Okay, but that, that just.
Well, clarify.
Anyway, if you have other questions, shoot to me, I'll get clarification from Christie, but we'll have that map for next month for approval for the next few, five year, um, renewal from that, uh, July one, I think is when it takes.
You know?
Yep.
Okay, non-resident enrollment application.
Okay, so I uploaded, kind of, it's all in one document, it's two different applications, and so this whole non-resident stuff is with the, uh, uh, superintendents, we've spent a lot of time in just districts, when, for the most part, our practices haven't changed. If a kid wants to come here, they're good standing, and they want to come to Rock Hills, by all means, fill out the application, and we're gonna accept you, um. One of those, the top one has what our good standing is, the second one is a little bit more vague. Because I'm trying to wait and see what legislation decides to do for sure. Um, Senate Bill three eighty-seven passed. The Senate, but not the House. So I, I don't know what'll be light item vetoed, what won't, won't come back here in a couple weeks, but in there, there's some good legislation in three eighty-seven, and there's some really bad, but one of them in there says that you can deny a kid if they don't meet your good standing policy. So I just presented both of those to you to kind of look through, and depending on how that legislation falls out, will depend on which one we will use. If we can keep them out based on our good standing, I think, heck yeah, let's do it. If we can't, we'll accept them for the year, and then they're not good standing, and then they can get rooted based on the non-resident policy. So, I just want to present you with both of the, the applications that I've kind of put together. And we don't have to make any decision on any of that, that actually doesn't have to be ready to go till June first, but wanted you guys to see that since the capacity has to be approved and posted on our website by May, which is down in the actions, so. They're just drafts, I'll look through them and again, give any feedback you may have on, on those, but it's. God, it is what it is, just jumping through hoops.
Um, Board of Education Self-Assessment. Uh, you want to tackle that, or Kenny, if you want to kind of present it?
Go over it real quick and then we.
Six, six J on your drive, if you want to look at it.
I, I think I tried to email that out to everybody a few days ago, uh, as I got it kind of put together. Um, if, does anybody need any help explaining this, that make kind of sense, I guess, uh? Uh, so each call, there's numbers one through seven, that's each board member's scores, and then they're not centered up perfectly, but the two numbers underneath each letter, then you know, represent how it was scored in those categories. You'd have to go back and look at the specific questions, but the area of importance I thought was kind of the information that we could get it real down to something we can use, um, you know. Wh- what I first pointed out was the biggest, the biggest gap we had in what we thought was important versus how we were doing in that department was the vision and planning area and the financial planning area. Um, those negative numbers out to the right represented, of course, the differences that I described. So that, that kind of points your, points our focuses to those two areas where we don't feel like we're living up to the importance, or our, our practices are not living up to the importance that we scored it. However, if you look at how we scored each category on importance, those aren't our highest scoring categories on how we, how we look at that. Like, for instance, the average score for vision and planning was a three point four. And the average scoring for importance on board member actions is three point seven, so we do pride the, if the scores mean anything, what we prioritize our board member actions, behaviors, things like that is, is the most important. Board superintendent relations were second in that category. And then we had, uh, board meeting practices, vision and planning, financial planning were toward the bottom, but you're talking a range of three point seven to three point four, so. It's not like a lot disparity, but some of the answers to the questions I did summarize as well, most of those I guess are representative of everything that was there. Um, I'll try to do a little better job next time, if I have more time, to get every single one on there, even if they're a little bit repetitive, but I think it gets the gist of things and. What Mark and I visited about was, you know, where does it, what, what do we, we, we needed to do this, it's in our policies, and that we should, we're supposed to be doing every year, so we have accomplished that. But then what do we draw from it? Is there some board goals that we set? Do we need to? I guess I'll let that be open for discussion on where we go from here with the information that we have.
Well, I said, I thought the, I, I, I got a lot of value out of the comments that were on there. Um, uh, the first takeaway I got was, I was, I was kind of, I, I felt reassured or felt good that a lot of those comments kind of agreed with each other, like there's a lot of commonality in what we see and think and um, and we're, we're lucky to have that as a board, but, um, like in the first question, we're just talking about, does your district have goals for the current year? The, kind of the general responses there are, yeah, we kind of do, but not really sure, and maybe we need to, so that, these are, these are things that, that we can take from this, and the next step is whether it be at like a board retreat, or whether we set aside time in board meetings. Obviously, this board, we feel like we have some goals, we're just not quite sure where they are or what they are exactly. Um, that needs to be defined more clearly. We need to have them. Here's, here's our goals up here that we're working on this year, and then, then do it again for next year. Um. Same thing with, uh, like with, does your board have improvement goals and, and areas for itself? Again, it, the comments are kind of like, yeah, we, we kind of do, and this is kind of the first step, but maybe we need to explore that a little further, so. Um, I, I think what, what I'm seeing from those comments is that we, we feel like we have a lot of commonality, we feel like we have kind of a shared vision, but we don't, the, the pressure I get is we don't feel like we really clearly defined that and taken the time to focus on it, and I think there's a lot of value in that process, so. Um, I guess that's, that's my two cents worth on it, but I think that the next step, if, if we want to, if we want to get more value out of what we have right here is to set aside some time to.
Narrow our focus.
Focus on those things.
Narrow the focus a little bit.
Yes, and, and have them our goals outlined a little more clearly and that kind of thing, so. Anyway, I thought it was good, I'm glad, and glad we did it.
Yeah, I'm, I'm really happy with how the numbers, I, I didn't plan for it to kind of come out as nice as it did as far as how the numbers kind of present themselves, but the way the, the template worked, it just kind of worked, and I thought it was, I thought it was real helpful information, I guess, from our internal standpoint.
Okay, I, I, I also noticed there was three or four comments about keeping board meetings efficient and moving, and so, we'll move on.
I, I don't know, we, is a, our, our policy says we should do this. I printed one out with signature lines at the bottom. I don't know if we all should sign one, if the president.
It was the minute.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything like that, yeah.
I'll just send this around.
Good record.
Ends up at your spot, you can, uh,
Okay.
Put it in the file or whatever.
And then, and, and as we go, as, as we kind of plan for next year, well, there's something else I kind of talked to Kenny about, is we'll, we'll try to plan when some, like the evaluations and kind of stagger those out a little bit better so that we didn't have three of them, and he was trying to process all in one month, and so just to, to make it easier on the person collecting that data, we may try to schedule our board self-evaluation at a different time than we're trying to do the superintendent evaluation.
I think in there wasn't board calendar, what are they calling it?
Yes.
I think it was you.
I, I do have.
I wasn't.
You wasn't? Oh, because I usually hear him with calendar.
All right, um, we are ready for action items, uh, track refurbishment bid proposal. It's item seven A.
Um, there's much to, this doesn't fix the pool though, right? This just paints it.
They, they kind of had a suggestion on how to minimize the pool.
But not in this bid, right?
Well, kind of, but it is, yeah, I think. Basically, he said, because of the way it was, the track was built, there's not, it's no flow off, but there's still slope one way or another. They have done a thing where they can jack it up, but even then it has nowhere to really flow to. What he says here is that uh, after they do the initial resurfacing and security, come back and apply two full structural sprays in opposing directions. Um, so there's a considerable amount of rubber in the spray, and I think that additional rubber, therefore, texture may bring those low areas up and up that the water will start sheeting off, or in fact, very shallow, um, therefore not creating the black staining that you're currently having. Not a fix-all, but it's.
Should minimize the.
Yeah, it sounds like you're gonna have to go ground up and start over if you're really gonna.
And it's really a cosmetic thing more than anything, because even if it's water the day of the meat, we get it off there with our big blowers and stuff, it's just, there's that black coloration there because of how that sits, but hopefully that would help, but that's the best he said that they thought he could do.
And I appreciate the fact that he addressed that too, um.
And did they get this whole letter with all the.
Well, that's, I guess I'd say if that's, you think this is the company you want to work with, and that, that they are doing what you need them to do up there, then I guess that's fine with me. I'd accept the motion to approve the bid.
And then she prove. Second.
All those in favor? We are seven zero. Uh, non-resident student enrollment capacity.
Okay, well, this is, this is the part that we actually have to make a, a movement on for this. So I put one in there, and then I got to look at it in my motion, I thought, shoot, it mentions projections as well. I put in a second one there that's titled web post. If you can look at that, the only difference is at the top of it, I added what our projected enrollment numbers are gonna be for next year. Um, just so you can see it, um. Some districts have that because then they have limited seats they can offer in certain grade levels, and so from a transparency standpoint from a district, put out what you're expecting and then justifying i- if you have limitations, but we don't really have any limitations, at least that'd be my recommendation. So the motion mentions both the projections and the capacity, um,
Okay.
as well on that, so, um, and then on that timeline, like I said, the reason that this is on this board agenda is because it has to be determined. We have to have that determined by May first, um. There's some gray area, whether it can, has to be po- posted on your website by the first, or you just have to have the decision made by the first and then post it. I mean, who cares? We'll post it when we're done with this meeting, I'm not pretty about it. We'll get on May first, but, um. The, the timeline of when this statute says we have to take applications for them to non-resi- non-resident students, um. Probably gonna be before legislation makes a decision on how they're gonna take that, um, your good standing policy to keep them out or not, but we can make changes, um, when that is determined, but otherwise, you know, if you look at our numbers, it's kind of interesting to see too, and it's good to see in one page is what our projection is. That sophomore class is a little bit low, but otherwise, you know, we're staying pretty steady at the mid twenties, which I think is good.
The class has always been that low.
Yeah, and, and that pre-K number thirty-six is, I was talking with Cassie, it's funny about that. If it goes over forty, then we're gonna ask for a wa- have to ask for a waiver, um, based on all that, but.
Does that, that's the three and the four year old?
The line, yeah.
Mine. So that number, I mean, it's not all going into kindergarten. It's gonna drop off to.
The, if I remember right, the four year olds is smaller. I think it was fifteen or sixteen in the four year olds, and then twenty-one-ish in the three years. But again, you know, and, and Cassie and I've had multiple conversations about, and, and this is getting awful a bit, but kindergarten readiness, you know, for those kids that aren't coming to our pre-K, how do we ensure that they're ready for kindergarten when they come, and so we've tried to spit lots of ideas on how can we get information out about our pre-K and encourage people to come to our pre-stay without going over forty, but to make sure kids are ready for pre-K, so. But. So, yeah, we just need a motion to approve, I think that it's written how it needs to be.
Yep, it's on your information page. Everybody wants to make that motion.
I'll make it, I moved to approve the USD one oh seven student enrollment projections and the non-resident enrollment capacity is presented. Second.
All those in favor? Seven zero. Okay, um, we are ready for executive sessions. Working on our efficiency. Um, does anybody need a break? Will we go into that? Okay, I will, I'm just asking.
You know, we've drank a lot of tea yet, so keep rolling.
And it's weak, so you'll, we'll keep you awake. Sorry, guys.
I'm so proud of you.
Well, I added a little water to it because I didn't want to make another pot.
What do you need on this first one?
First one, be pretty short and sweet. I don't, the students, yeah. Yours is for staff that we talked about.
Well, I had that one student also.
Okay, yeah, so we have two things. One of them will be with, well, Sam can be in here, both of them.
Okay, so you want.
Ten minutes for you to break cover both.
And with Sam.
And, yeah.
And, okay. Mr. President, I move to go into executive session with Mr. Self and Mr. President. President, I discuss confidential student information pursuant to the exception relating to actions adversely or favorably affecting a student under coma. The open meeting will resume at the boardroom at two twenty one.
Second.
All those in favor? Seven zero. You can go tell us if it's getting dark outside yet.
That's why I got up and went check.
Okay, I'm back in open session.
All right.
No action, so we are ready for our next executive session.
With moon and.
Personnel. Fifteen maybe? I don't think I need anybody else.
Just you.
Yeah, I think so.
Mr. President, I move you going to executive session with Mr. Self, President, to discuss employee contracts pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under coma. The open meeting will resume at the boardroom at two thirty eight.
All those in favor?
I assume we're going back in then to talk about the other that you and I met about before.
Uh, yeah, I guess we'll have to, I'm afraid about that.
All right.
No, that's fine.
Get all those in favor, seven zero.
Thank you.
Yeah.
He is the one you'll do again or seven A?
Okay, we're ready.
We are back in open session and we are ready to accept motions.
Okay. A motion to accept resignation of Megan Casey, elementary teacher at the end of her contract year. Hold on just a second, yeah, sorry. Then find the rest of you.
Brandon, second. All those in favor? Seven zero.
Motion to accept the resignation of Daisy Tucker as junior class sponsor.
Second.
All those in favor? Seven zero.
Motion to approve the hiring of Hadley Tyfo as elementary teacher for the twenty four, twenty five school year.
Second.
All those in favor?
I think that's.
Seven zero. You were close. I would have been on that.
Okay, motion to approve the hiring of Riley Richard as elementary teacher for the twenty four, twenty five school year.
Second.
All those in favor? Seven zero.
Motion to approve hiring Stuart Boils as assistant golf coach.
Second.
All those in favor? Seven zero.
Motion to approve Trevor Elkins as assistant track coach.
Second.
All those in favor? Seven zero.
What about jump start?
Yes.
We added that one, guys, because.
We'll do the next one.
Definitely do that.
We, yeah, we added that into this.
Yep.
Okay, I am, then I think we are ready for another executive session.
Seven B?
Yes.
Uh, how long do we want to do this for?
Let's do fifteen, just to be safe.
Okay, and then just invitation extended to both of them?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. President, I move to go into executive session on Mr. Self's presence and an invitation extended to Mr. Myers and Mrs. Bozarth to discuss employee contracts pursuant to the non-elected personnel exception under coma and the open meeting will resume at the boardroom at two fifty five.
Second.
All those in favor? Seven zero.
Hold on just a second. I was looking at some things behind.
Okay, we are back in open session and we will have some action here.
But that's in the folder.
Yes, in negotiations for four, twenty twenty four.
You're going to bring these.
I make a motion to approve summer academy staffing. Kimmy Brown, Hannah Fugate, Heather Garst, and Sarah Warren with the possibility of adding Janice McMillan if the student numbers are there.
Second.
All those in favor? Seven zero. Yeah, I think you nailed it. So are we ready for executive session on negotiations then or is there anything else?
I'll say it. We find a minute to adjourn before we get.
Absolutely. We will take a five minute break.
Uh, Myers?
Yep.
Go ahead and, you want a Ziploc bag and make your sandwich for tomorrow or just take some meat and bread and a separate sandwich?
No.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, I believe we are ready, Brandon.
Okay, thanks, Derek.
Mr. President, I move we go into executive session with Mr. Self's presence to discuss employer employee negotiations pursuant to the exception for employee, employer, employee negotiations under coma. The open meeting will resume at the boardroom at three thirty.
Second.
All those in favor? Seven zero.
All right. Yep.
There we are.
I'm looking forward to this last motion.
I'm going to.
Thank you. We're all a little leery.
All those in favor? Seven zero.
No.
We just wanted to.
And you guys.
I was waiting for somebody to throw out another like.
No, you guys are like awesome because you know what? Soon as I go into this in, I'm ready to proofread my minutes. I've already got them all typed.
Yes, I do.
So I just make sure.
You guys did just enough executive sessions for me to get that done.
Game to please.
Means I don't have to.